Oh, welcome to the Curry County Board of Commissioners Administrative Workshop. I'm gonna call to order and amendment approval of the agenda, gentlemen.
So moved as amended?
Whoop.
Okay.
Did we amend it?
Well...
Well, it was amended from the original.
Yep, did you get not get a... yeah, you do. That's an amended one.
Uh, but I'm also gonna add another one here, so before we make a motion, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Whoop.
We just wa... I just needed to know in convenience of time for everybody if we could switch 3A, 3B. That's why, uh, Building Inspector Thompson is here and Roadmaster Christensen is here for the, um, four-day, uh...
Oh, just the time, just the...
We're just gonna switch those, yeah. Some annex departments possibly go into a four-day work week, four 10-hour days. Seven to six with a one-hour lunch, so, um, they've offered to contribute a little bit in the, in the concept here. I think Assessor Cohen might be here later. So, um, yeah, I'm asking if we could switch 3A and 3B. We would do the new jail courthouse, uh, cost estimate, uh, at 2:30.
That's fine. I'm good with that. Chris, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah. So, look, we got a motion to approve the...
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Got moving... a motion in the second? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. We are up for... now, what, we're gonna do C instead of A, right? So, that's Garrett, first off?
No, B, I think.
No, B.
B.
We did, we switched A and B.
Okay, I gotcha. I don't gotcha.
So I'll start off real quick here, Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, so, you know, the, just the real generalized questions that were in the, uh, agenda packet and the agenda item is, is there a way that we could better serve the public? Can we save diminishing funds? Is there any way we can improve productivity? Would it be better for some of our employees? Hopefully all of them, if we ever, in fact, decided to pursue that path. Individual departments scheduling. Which departments, if any, would apply? So, you know, the general headings on this that I also included with the agenda is how employers benefit, benefit from a four-day work week. That's employers. A four-day work week in action. Why four days doesn't mean less work. Then they offer four key benefits of a four-day work week. And I'll skip those for now. Uh, well, no, I won't. Talent attraction. Lower employee turnover. Lower cost. And I skipped one. Increased productivity. A little bit of information each one of those. And the final, uh, subheading is, are shorter work weeks the future of work? You see that a lot around the country. You actually see a lot of big companies, of course, putting their people at home. And, uh, they're finding that, that in some cases, there is more productivity. There are happier employer, employees. So on and so forth. So, I just want to open up to the board. You know, workshop is just that. Work session, just take a look at this and, and I think it would be mostly in the annex. But, you know, I don't wanna exclude any departments, uh, other than obviously the Sheriff's Department. But, scheduling is a big part of this. Over the years that I was in business, rotating people and time off and all that, boy, that was, that was a big job. So, um, I'm not saying it would be, everybody got Monday off or everybody got Friday off, but that would be up to the department managers and elected officials to structure it how they feel would be best for, you know, the best service to the, to the public. So, that's my, that's my opening, uh, comments.
Okay. Questions?
Nah, I'm gonna reserve any questions I have for now.
I had never really thought about it. I saw this and I looked at it and I, I don't know if I have really any... Thing I know, we, we did it at Kuz Curry Electric and it has worked fantastically because Kuz Curry, unlike just Curry County, has got huge ends of Kuz and Curry County. So they, the guys can go out and have a, a 10-hour day and, and spend time working instead of traveling and... But we, they did the 10 hours a day with a half-hour lunch. And so, you start at seven, you're done at 5:30. That 5:30 gets people that are, get off at five, able to go into the office, which that would work here too. Especially if we had an hour lunch, you wouldn't get, leave here till, like, you're thinking seven to, seven to six with an hour lunch.
Yeah, or you, I would assume the departments would give their employees the option of a 30-minute lunch.
This is, yeah. Julie, you got anything to add on that? Anybody from the, uh, audience?
I do, as a matter of fact. Julie, so payroll and HR. Several, well, a few of the departments in the annex already work 410s. Community Development, uh, the Assessor's Office, but they've, they've done their schedules so that the office is open every day of the week. And I think that's important. If we're here to serve the public, I think it's important that the offices are open to the public every day. The four-day work week really wouldn't make sense in our office. Uh, we are an intergovernmental department, so we serve all the other departments. So if the other departments are here, we kinda need to be here. Also with the way payroll rolls, you know, I can't necessarily work a four-day week if I've got a payday coming up on Friday and I'm not here. It, there's, it wouldn't work for our office, I can say that. But I think it is important, and I think Community Development and the Assessor's Office have their offices scheduled now. So there is at least one person in the office every day of the week. So whether they're working Monday through Thursday or Tuesday through Friday, the offices are open to the public. And I think that's the important piece.
And Rhodes has been doing it for a long time.
Rhodes, it makes sense. Really, you got, you've got crews out all over the county and it makes sense to have their longer day 'cause it gives them more productive time out in the field, less time travel. You know, you've got one less day of, of vehicles going from one end of the county to the other. So that makes sense, and it gives them a longer productive day. They used to alternate back and forth between 410s and 58s. You know, they do 58s in the off-season, if you have an off-season, and 410s during the summer when the work is high. It got to a point several years ago that said, doesn't make sense to flip-flop back and forth, let's just stay 410s.
Headlight on.
So for them, for them, that makes sense.
Yep.
So HR, switch, yeah. If you'd, if payroll, paydays on Friday, if that wasn't, for you personally, if you didn't have that obligation, would you prefer to work a four-day and have those three days off and...
Yeah, I haven't really thought about it. It doesn't, it's really a non-issue to me.
You might be old school, though. And I mean that as a compliment.
So, um, but as far as, you know, payrolls are semi-monthly, so it's not every other Friday. If it were, if it were that, it could be a different story. But the way the payrolls are semi-monthly and the way they fall and they're different days of the week at different times, so it just doesn't make sense. Also, for, um, for AP, you know, you're cutting out one day of, of ability to get those checks ready every week 'cause they do run checks every week. So...
Well, one day, but you still got the hours covered.
That's true. That's true. You would have to ask them.
Do you know how many, while you're here, I wanna keep going here, but, um, how many, how many departments are on the 37 and a half hours?
None now.
None now.
Everyone is 40 hours.
I, good. I remember a couple of years ago, that was somewhat of an issue, so that, very helpful. Yeah, that's all I have for now.
Okay. Anybody else like to speak to this? Jim?
Afternoon, Commissioners. Jim Cohen, Curry County Assessor. Thanks, Julie. And, and she did, uh, give you a pretty good idea what it is that we do in the Assessor's Office. We do rotate, so we have somebody that works Fridays. I prefer to work a five-day week myself, so I'm usually there on Fridays myself. But, uh, prior to, a year or two ago, we were on 410s and, and the office was open to the public Monday through Thursday. Public got used to it. Didn't, it wasn't really an issue for the public. You know, I think it was more an issue for the Commissioners at that time and, and, uh, you asked that we change it up and be open the five days a week, and, and we are and, and, but my employees are still working the 410s. The employees like working the 410s. I think it makes them more productive. Partially because we have, you know, what I would call protected hours. We have, most of my employees get there at 6:30 in the morning, so they're working, you know...
I can verify that, by the way.
Until, like, 8:30 before we even open up to the public, and so that's protected time. They're pretty productive during that time. And it does allow for my appraisers, when they go out in the field, spend more time out in the field. If we're having to drive to Langlois, you know, obviously, that's 45 minutes to an hour one-way, and if they can spend a couple more hours while they're up there in a day. I think one of the things they found at Kuz Curry, like you said, John, was that it does save gas. I, I think to a much lesser extent, they found that they were even saying, saving on electricity. I don't know that we'd look at this to be so much as a cost savings. In, in those respects, gas and electricity or, or whatever other incidental costs we have. But, uh, I, I think it's more so, I think it's a good idea because today's employees like it. And, uh, I think they're more productive. That's what I have.
Okay.
So you, you do have your office open on Fridays now?
It is open on Fridays, but if you decide to go back to, uh, a four-day work week, I'd probably close it back up on Fridays.
Okay.
Like I said, the, the public didn't have a problem with it.
Yeah, they get, they get used to it. Well, they got used to it with Kuz Curry Electric.
Well, mostly, I mean, we had, especially during tax season, we always had people coming in on Friday looking for the tax office and... So it, people did miss you, Jim.
Well, and one of the things we found out was after we signed the tax statements, we do like to keep it open on Fridays. So we do that season.
Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, just, I think, Commissioner Herzog and HR, Julie hit on it really well as far as the road department. We save a lot of money not paying gas that one day a week. Plus, you know, we mobilize to the far ends of the county, and when you send, you know, 10 people out to the far ends of the county and you only have, it takes an hour and a half to get there and hour and a half back, you could only work, you know, five hours. Whereas if you have a 10-hour day now, you're working seven hours. And now, we could maybe complete that job in a day or two instead of two, three days. So it cuts the mobilization down big time for us, but, you know, we're a 24/7 operation as well. You know, these last two weeks, we've had plenty of storms and my crews were out there all in the middle of the night picking up downed trees, helping Kuz Curry Electric with trees on power lines on our roads and, uh, with, and sanding and snow plowing roads. And so, uh, it works really well. It saves us a lot of money and, uh, but we're on call-through dispatch 24/7.
Well, that, that wouldn't change. Dave?
David Barnes, um, I'm not opposed to the idea, but it, I don't think that it should be a county-wide proposal. I think it should be left, like somebody said, leave it up to the department heads, leave it up to the electors. You know, my department in Treasury, we can't do a four-day week. There's banking that happens every day. So somebody needs to come in and do it every day. Whether you get more, I, I, I used to work in the field. I, I used to work at an electric company. I understand what, what Rich is saying and what Jim is saying about getting your people out and having them do more work once they're out in the field. And yes, I definitely agree that for people like that, you see more productivity. But people who are, I've, I've found in, in just my observation, that people who sit at desks for eight hours a day, people seem to be programmed for that, and that extra 10, that extra two hours a day, um, you know, I, I would debate Jim on that of whether, how much more productivity there really is. But when you're thinking about going to a 10-hour day, I want you to all look to your, to your right. And Mr. Jeswood's sitting over there, lives up in Port Orford. If he were seven to six, he would have to leave his house by 5:30, which means he's up 4:30 in the morning to be here by 7 o'clock. And won't get home until 7:30 at night, every night. And that's a hardship for, for a lot of people, you know. There's, there are people who live at the far edges of this county that do commute down here to go to work. You have people in facilities and other places, and that puts a hardship on them. You know, all of a sudden, a 10-hour workday with an hour community on each side is a 12-hour day. And that's an awful long day for somebody, you know. So I just want you to keep that in mind. But, you know, like, like has been said, if you wanted to leave it at the departmental levels, you know, sheriff can't work a four-day week, juvenile can't work a four-day week, I can't work a four-day week. You know, people have to be here, so, you know, I'd, I'd rather see you leave it up to P, up to others than rather mandating it as a county-wide matter.
Yep. Before you leave, I think you did your math incorrectly, though. 'Cause you said JJ won't get home till 7:30?
If he's not leaving here till 6 o'clock. If his workday is from 7 till 6...
He's only half an hour to Port Orford from here.
Mr. Jeswood, would you rather...
How did you drive? I don't drive that fast. It's...
Gold Beach to Port Orford?
Forty-five minutes. I'm sorry, it's 45 minutes, so he'd be home at 7 o'clock.
It's 30 miles. It's a half an hour, Dave.
Staff Jeswood, would you rather drive back north to Gold Beach four days a week or five?
Five.
You would. Okay. Council Pope?
I'm just...
Yeah.
In a UPS truck, I could do it in a half an hour, so I know you, everybody can do it.
I, I don't drive that fast. I'm old now. You know, when I was 18, yeah, but I'm, I'm 60 now. I don't drive that fast anymore.
Okay, alright. Chris?
I just wanna say that I'm, I'm one of the old-schoolers, I guess, uh, but I, I, I think it should be left up to department heads. But I want department heads to know, as, as I want this board to know, now we are sworn to serve. And we are a service-oriented industry, government. Not industry, but government. So, making sure that when someone comes and knocks on a door in one of our services, that that door will be answered is imperative to me. So if department heads wanna be four days a week, if Assessor's Office wants to go 410s, I'm fine. I just like that person, when they come to the door on where, wherever they're, whatever department they're coming to, when they knock on the door or call, someone answers the phone or answers the door because they've taken time out of their day to get here. And if it's one person a week, that's servicing, giving service to one person a week that pays our salary.
Anybody else like to speak to this? Ja- Jar- Garrett?
Mr. Thompson.
Garrett Thompson, building official. I work 410s. Love it. I would never wanna go back. That third day gives me sanity. But I, I do understand the hardships for, for some in, in the 410s. We have individuals that are, uh, who's working opposite schedules than their spouses, so they don't have to have daycare and the like. And, uh, I love the idea of putting it up as an option. I would, I would just hate to, to mandate it. So, yeah, putting it, putting it at department heads' level of responsibility is, is appropriate. We, our office is working four days a week right now. We do have people in office on Fridays. The, the office is not open to the public, but we get a lot of work done during that day. Plan review and, and other, uh, in our office workings. So, so we're quite productive, even though, you know, the door's not necessarily open to the public. And it, it seems to be working out really well for us. We don't get any complaints. I mean, it's posted on our website, uh, you know, on our, on our Building Department page, that, that we're not open on Fridays. So, um, I haven't noticed any, any complaints myself.
Well, it kinda seems to me like it, it must've been department head optional all along, right? 'Cause I mean, I don't know who did it first, road department or planning or Assessor's Office?
Uh, we, we, I, I can't speak towards the other departments, but our department did it out of necessity. We were, uh, a person shy of having a full roster. So, um, we asked specifically if we could close the doors until we were fully staffed. And then we asked, um, after, after we found that staff member, if we could remain, uh, closed until after the holiday season, 'cause we only had just, uh, about a month left. So, um, we're at that point now where we potentially could open back up if, if it was asked of us. But we have found that our productivity on that day, when we're not, we can get work done uninterrupted, is, is a, a great boost to us, so...
Okay.
Thanks.
If we're not, if we're not gonna talk about that anymore?
Nope.
We are going to go to the courthouse or no?
We just need five minutes and she'll be calling in.
Okay.
For our WR protection. I just forward you that again.
I haven't done it yet, I'll go.
Okay. I thought maybe I could keep you up and go to your office.
So Garrett, can we continue just and talk about yours for...
Thanks, everyone for attending.
So, I'm, uh, bringing back to you guys my, uh, proposed updates to the, the Curry County Building Code. And, um, I'm been working on it for, for a little bit now, trying to, to just make sense of it. I'm, hopefully you guys have all had a chance to read it and, and might have some good comments for me or, or suggestions. So I, I did get a, a fun surprise. Building Codes Division for the State of Oregon sent me an email, uh, needing a program renewal, uh, for the Building Department. It's one of those things where you, you do it or lose it.
Yeah.
So it's just one of those where you, it's kinda like the censuses. I just, you know, I put it on the list and get it done. One of the things that they required was a copy of our Building Department Operating Plan. I must admit, I was a little shocked when I went to look for it on our, our drives and did not find one. So, I downloaded the ORS off the internet of exactly what was required in a Building Department's operating plan, and I set a task creating, um, uh, or compiling the information. Uh, I found that most of that information was either on our website or, um, the lion's share of it was actually inside of the code. So I did make a few red lines, which I'd like to give to you guys, um, on my proposed code. Just, just some one-sentence additions, but there's two or three of them, so I, I wanna get that to you. That will take the place of actually having to duplicate a document and call it an, an official operating plan, but this, this would work as that document. So it'll, it'll take care of that for the State of Oregon as well.
Good.
But other than those, a couple little additions, which I'll, which I'll get to after this meeting, nothing, nothing else I've really found has, has changed significantly. So, um, I think I had one error, uh, when I wrote this, and it was actually in the retention of plans, and I think I'd called out, uh, nine, what was it, 180 days or something like that? And it's actually two years that, that plans have to be retained after the completion of a job. And I did make that correction on my copy, but, um, I was wondering if anybody else had any comments for me?
I have a couple.
Good, sure.
Um, on section 202 of the abatement of dangerous buildings. Here again, I don't know if, you know, I, I can understand that it needs to happen, um, but who pays for it? Is that something, and I was, should we have language in there that says who's gonna pay for this? And I was, it added to the section.
So, so there is language, um, further on in this code that, that says where it's gonna come from. Honestly, where it's gonna come from is us in the short run. It's about life safety.
Right.
You know, my department, I can, I, I could handle the cleanup of one, possibly two, and that, that would be it. So, the magnitude of, of dangerous buildings that we have, um, is greater than that. So we'd have to be extremely careful on, on what rises to the, the necessity of having to, um, take, take a structure down and clean it up. Because there's always the option of doing the work and then putting a lien on the property, but there's no guarantee of when we'd be able to collect on that lien. So that's...
But if you put a, like a mechanic's lien on a property, because that would be a mechanic's lien, you could, you could force a sale of the property after so many years and recover your money.
Uh, I believe if it's over, if it's a certain percentage of value of the property.
Yeah. So, and that's all, I'm, I'm not disputing anything. What I'm asking is, should the board look at protecting its, its resources by having a provision set up in, in the code or an ordinance that states that, you know, we can lien your property? If we have to pay for the abatement of your property, we can lien the property and foreclose and, and therefore forfeit the property and sell it down the road after so many years?
Yeah, yeah. I, I, like I said, there, I did add language in this, but I think would definitely strengthen it if the board would, would look at adding that to...
That's something possibly, uh, I know you don't have much to do, but it's just something for you to think about.
Add, put it on the list, yeah. On your list.
But I think that's important, you know.
Definitely in here, and there were some other, uh, recommendations towards, towards that as well. But, yeah, that, that, I actually spoke with, uh, Brad Record about that. The, the possibility of even adding a line item to my, to my budget, just to, to have a place to pull from. Take some of my, my budget and putting it in an untouched line item just for the demolition and cleanup of, of a structure. If, if it rose to that, I mean, you know, nobody wants to, to eat that large of a, of a bill, but if it's life safety, then it's gotta happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like this one right next door here. I'm, I'm surprised nothing's been done with that.
The only, the only reason why I have not acted on that structure in any way is because it seems to be imploding instead of exploding.
Yeah, it is. The back roof did the other day.
The, the walls aren't leaning out. Everything seems to be leaning in. So if it, if it fails, it's going to fail upon itself, and it is, it's, it is barred from entry. Everything is boarded up, uh, so there's, there, there's not an immediate risk of loss of life. So, and that's what I look for. I, I try to respect people's property rights as much as I possibly can.
One other question I had was a vacation. Um, you know, are, are we looking to try and help? I, I mean, I know you, sometimes we have to vacate a property, but, um, with the, with the current state of the county, with housing and all of that, are there any steps in place with other agencies to possibly help placement or anything like that? Because some, a lot of, a lot of that is people's own doing, and we have to pay for our, you know, for the choices we make in our life. But there are, I was at a property at lunchtime that, oh my goodness. And, uh...
Sure.
If that person had, were to have to vacate their property, they have absolutely nowhere to go. So it's, it's kinda like not their fault that they're in the situation. You know, there are cases that it's not actually the person's fault.
Yeah, I, I just...
They're victim of the circumstance.
I just dealt with a, a similar case myself. It was a, a elder gentleman and his house was in an immediate state of failure. And it was to the point where it, it was gonna cost him his life very soon. He did not want to leave his place, and unfortunately, it, it became my choice and I, I...
Right.
I condemned his house. And, and it's not a good feeling, but the walls were, were, um, he was, the only part of his house that was still habitable was the second story. Everything else had collapsed underneath of it and it was starting to lean. I mean, it, it was, it was gonna cost him his life. He is now living with his daughter in another state, which is amazing that he did have a place to go. Even though that wasn't his first, his first choice. He wanted to, to stay in his home. But, um, yeah, sometimes, you know, those, those hard decisions need to be made for the better good. I, I hate to make it. Makes you feel like a bad guy, but, um...
Better than a death.
It's, yeah.
My question was more to help you. Is there a way that we can work together to try and find some other resources? When we first go to a property that you're gonna probably condemn? Say, "Look, I need some contact information for family members or whatever, that, you know, we have someone that we could contact and say, 'Do you know the conditions?'" I had it happen with my sister, believe it or not, a year ago. A Sheriff's Department called me. She'd been rushed to a hospital and a deputy called me and he says, "Commissioner, you need to know the conditions your sister's living in."
If, if we could find an avenue to help these individuals, I would be forever grateful 'cause that, that is, uh, it's a huge concern, especially now with the housing shortages that we have. I mean, it's not, it's not about finding a place, it's that right now, there's not a place, um, to be had. So, yeah, if we could, if we could solve that, that would be, that would be... So, yeah, if we could, if we could solve that, that would be, that would be great.
Okay. I just would like to work, you know, that's what I'm saying is if there could be a red flag or something that says, hey, somebody, you know, this person is going to be condemned. We need to take the next step to try and help them or whatever, you know what I mean?
Sure.
So anyway, just I know agencies working together.
Figure out the information of who, you know, who the property owner is. And we can work with possibly the sheriff's department to figure out who the next next in would be. See if we can arrange to help. That's definitely something we can put together.
Okay. I really didn't see anything else in here that I had questions on right away. But to be honest with you, I didn't read the whole thing. I just kind of scanned it more than really read it. So I I haven't seen anything else that was a concern for me.
Yeah.
Me neither, so.
So just to open up that conversation. So in the the fee section, one of the changes that I I made due to the.
A page, bud?
So it's on the second page.
Okay.
It is 2.08.050. And I added, I I would like to add the line. The fees collected by the building department shall be used for the administration and enforcement of a building inspection program under 455.210.3G of the O R S. And and that's a state law saying that basically building department fees have to be used in the building department. They can't be used to subsidize other parts of the government. That's intentional to keep building permit costs low.
I like that.
Two sections down, under deputies, I just put in accordance with prescribed procedures before, you know, the rest of that started, just to to make sure that it's verbalized that we're we're not stepping outside of the your bounds. I'm not just going to go, you know, deputizing any any person to to assist me without bringing it to you first. So. So I'd got those. And I think I had one at the end. Yeah, it was just the changing the 90 days to to two years for retention of plans was the only other, the only other catch I had. Everything else remained the same as what you have. So.
You know, we can't, we don't vote on anything in a workshop.
We don't vote on anything in a workshop, so.
Back 19th and consent agenda.
If I can, I would like to bring it before you for a vote.
Sure.
If we're going to be changing the county code, it actually has to be done by an ordinance. So there would be two hearings and we'd have to publish and stuff. But I can work with with Garrett to set that up and we could try to get the first hearing for the 19th to start the process.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Very good.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks. Thanks, Garrett. Mr. Chair, I just changed, we still have Director Lang here, so I just changed O R W Architecture to 3 o'clock.
Okay.
So we won't be holding up Director Lang any.
Director Lang, come on in, Director Lang. Do you work for U-Haul too?
Yeah. I think I've got like 10,000 steps in today.
I'll bet.
The good news is we're moving.
I'll bet you do.
And this will probably be pretty short. This was to follow up on discussion about Colvin Building updating I T. So when I left here, I spoke with Dave and he sent me a whole bunch of information on the A R P funds. Did some homework there. Then I talked to Brad several times about, oh, well, not several times, a couple of times about A R P funds there. We believe that with the additions and partnerships that we're going to have at the Colvin Building, that it does apply and that we would like to submit an application in. And it would be under the services to impacted communities. We think we have youth who've been directly impacted by COVID, education, G E D, social services. I think there's about five expenditure categories that that falls under. So perhaps the discussion would be, we would like to turn in the application, see if it's approved. If it's approved, we have an answer. If it's not approved, then maybe we get creative and look at other sources to be able to do that. But I did try to get Dan to be here today to answer general questions. But I'm going to guess with what's going on with Goose Curry and all the power outages, he was not able to be here today. The quote's pretty, it's pretty basic. That's what they need to update.
I I'm sure all in favor, I'm in favor of paying with paying for that through with the A R P funds if if it's can qualify, so.
I figure that would save everybody's budget.
Yeah.
Money's all coming from the same pot. So I don't know if there's questions or anything like that, but it sounds like that might be step one is we will submit that and then.
I I haven't seen the the request, so what is the request amount?
14, I think it was put in last time's budget, 14, 381, I believe. The original, when I came before BACH, I submitted it 14, 328, 96.
And this is for, just so I'm clear, a new phone system?
No.
No, it's to update the entire I T over at the Colvin Building. Originally, when they updated, it was part of it because it wasn't being used, they didn't do it. So everything, it's running at about 1/10 the speed that it should be. Dan has some concerns that we may be looking at a crash.
Are you going to have your own server over there or are we still going to use the main server?
It's a, it's a separate, and I have to apologize, I don't understand it all, but it's a separate server that's in there right now. It's us in maintenance. And they want to not only upgrade it, but put more ports so we can expand and bring partners in. And we did already buy, it needed a battery backup. We've already purchased that. And then once we get over, there would be Wi-Fi for our resource room. But we have already got a grant to pay for all Wi-Fi once we get there, so.
Are we in agreement, gentlemen, that if this can come out of A R P? And and your initial thought was it would it would be, it would qualify? Sorry, bud, you got to.
Um, my my initial thought was that it'd be infrastructure, would go under infrastructure, which wouldn't qualify. Without talking to Wendy, she 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 had a different thought on it of using using, because there are provisions in A R P that that speak to providing services to, what's the term, that the disproportionate areas of the population. And and that that would that would qualify.
Okay. All right, well, I think you got a head nod, so we we can't vote on anything, Wendy, you know that, but you.
We'll do all the paperwork and get it submitted.
So the 19th and, yeah, we can, we can vote that through. All right, thank you, Wendy. Okay. Colvin Building update, Garrett, Curry County Workshop, we did that.
So I told O R W we could do three, I can get them back on here probably. Yeah, next five minutes. Hitty up.
We could take a little break. Five minute break.
Good to me. Any, did code, anyone else have anything? All right, five minute break.
Five minute break. Pardon me? We're on, yes, okay. So we're just waiting, ladies and gentlemen, for the new jail courthouse O R W architectural plans update. Russ, rough estimate on total cost. Make sure you're sitting down.
Phase two, another, that's the jail.
Easy. So 42 million? Wow. Put the, put the mic, what's? Okay, all right. Thanks, James. 50 million, you said. Wow.
Jails are really expensive, especially a new jail, yeah, state of the art. They've even got floor sensors in them now. They know right where you're standing. The federal jails do. They know right where you're standing in your cell.
Wow. Too much information.
Well, they couldn't have cameras in the cells because nudity and all that stuff. So they did pressure sensors in the floor, make sure you're there. Make sure only one person's in there, those kind of things. They know how much weight's in there.
Do we have to have that?
No, we don't have to. I'm just saying, I do, I I just. I won't say my source. Okay, it says she needs to be let in. She's on, but needs to be let in from a meeting.
They would probably know that, though, wouldn't they?
Chris, did you hear that?
What?
Court got an email, says that she's on, just needs to be let in on a meeting room. So do we know? Does anybody know how to do that?
Up in the the snowflake thing up there? Uh, no, not that one. I don't know. She's in the waiting room, James. See where the, see it says one person up there, the two little people, right there, yeah. Nope, that's only us, okay. She doesn't have the right meeting room, or maybe we don't.
Does she have the right I D? Do you see that meeting I D?
Yeah, make sure she's on the right meeting. There's the meeting I D, give her that I D. See it right there above you?
Meeting is unlocked.
You just locked the meeting. Oh, let me send her another one. Go down and unlock the meeting, Commissioner. Right there? Yeah.
Probably over on the button. There you go, it's unlocked now.
Yeah. If you have her email address, could, do you put an email address in on these or? Yeah, hit the invite button, Commissioner. Should we send her another one? Maybe she's on an old one or something. Commissioner, would you hit the invite button right above that? And then you could share that link with her to an email. You can email that link too, just email that link. No, I don't know if we can email from here, though, can we? Well, that's the meeting code. You could just send her the meeting code, Commissioner Boyce. It's 193, 939, 397. 193? Yeah, 193, 939, 397.
Does it have to have those hyphens?
No, it automatically type in. Let's try that. I think we had this problem with them the last time they tried to come on.
Yeah, it was a little bit of a. Hi.
Okay, we've got to go back. The the one that she was sent was 987-800-845, so maybe it is. Maybe there was two on there or something. Can I see the mouse? Two or three different ways, yeah. We can close this one. And the meeting is, and then we go to go to meeting. Come on. And then open this up. What was it, Commissioner? Veterans Health Authority, Marina?
Nope.
Are you talking about my meetings?
Nope, not in it. We don't have that I D. Type it in here? You want to type? Type in 987-dash-800. Oh, sorry. Connie Hunter. Oh, that's Connie Hunter, right, Commissioner.
There it is.
All right. I'm going to unmute us, we are unmuted.
Hey, look at there.
Can you hear us?
Hi there, hi there, this is Dana with the O R W, and I am in the process of trying to get onto the new meeting code.
You're on, you're on with us now, and we also have David Welkerson on.
Did you say, did you say you almost let David on?
No, I say he is on. We can see him, we can't see you, but we can see Dave. He's in a nicely flowered shirt. We could give you the number if that helps. Well, she's already on here, I think.
Yeah.
She's on the phone. Oh, okay.
I I would love to be on, um, on the video. Shane, is it possible to send me a link?
We just, we we gave you the address. Okay, Commissioner Boyce is going to send you a link.
Maybe David could help you out. He figured, with a shirt like that, he should be able to figure it out.
Yeah, if we get David to to forward it to you, Dana, then we know we're going to get you on the right meeting here. Our apologies.
Yeah, so it's the same link as before, Dana, the link didn't change. Because I typed it in. So yeah, I think if you scroll down on that email you just got, toward the bottom, it's open.
Dana, that's my fault, I I think.
Oh, no worries, no worries at all.
There it is, coming up.
Oh, that, oh, fantastic.
Well, it still says she's just on the phone, though, I think.
Yeah, Jeff was having the same issue, so he's.
There she is.
All right, you can close your phone call now, Dana, and that way there we won't get an echo. There you go, we got you.
Jeff should be here any moment.
Tell Jeff he's always late, Chris said that, and you can tell him that. We can't hear you, Dana. You need to unmute, Dana. That's the problem she had last time we couldn't hear.
Right?
There's Jeff.
Yes, this is why we we move go to meetings to Teams because go to meetings seems to be, it's wacky.
We got Microsoft Teams as well. We've, we've got that as well, that software as well in the computer, Microsoft Teams. So maybe the next time we do this, we can use that. Dana, are you on? Yeah.
Yay.
There you are.
Dana, I can relate to you. You and I are are brother and sister when it comes to this I T stuff, so. I I'm not laughing at you, I'm laughing with you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the solidarity very much. So are you, if I share my screen, are you able to see my screen?
Yes, I can, if I get the mouse for a second. We'll try. Think I could figure this one out. We go back to, uh, right here, I think it is. Yeah, it's make presenter, there it is. And there we go. You are now presenter.
Excellent, thank you.
And we can see your screen, we have it.
Okay, let's, okay. I'm going to get a few things off of my.
Welcome, Jeff. Hey, Jeff, how are you?
Thank you. I'm doing well, thanks, good to be here today, thank you, everybody.
Okay. Are there any questions before we dive in?
No. No, we're all sitting down, though.
Right, right, yep, yep, this is definitely, it's a, it's a big number. So the cost model, uh, had, the first page is a lot of fine print. We will cover that as we're actually going through the numbers. And I think it may be easier for all of us to hang together and understand it. If I just kind of dive into the numbers, then we can come back to detail at any time. So these are the costs. these are the costs. And... There we go. Uh, can you, can you see this spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm going to go straight down here, right? This is the biggest number that there is, 106,500,000. And I will walk you all through how the numbers are built, and answer any questions that you may have. Okay?
Okay.
This is a normal product process that we, uh, go through a very kind of methodical approach of meeting with your departments, understanding what your buildings need to be, uh, creating a concept design, and how big it is, and its flow, and things like that. And so, we shared that at the last meeting in December. And at the end, after we have provided enough definition about how big the project is, and what some of its materials and systems are, then we do the cost model at the end, because it needs that development before we can really put numbers to it. Um, you can see on the left-hand column here, there are three major categories. There's site costs, there's building costs, and there's what we call special considerations for this project. And the way that the numbers are built is that there is a unit cost, typically it's a cost per square foot. And then there is the area that that pertains to. Sometimes it's, uh, an allowance. Um, usually what we've done is we've created, we've taken off square footage from the actual concept design. And that creates a construction cost. That, this is, this is the number that you would pay the overall, um, let's say, subcontractors. In the state of Oregon, there's something called green energy technology. And that is, um, 1.5% of the construction cost that is, needs to be invested in green energy. And it is site-dependent, but often it gets, uh, translated into something like solar panels on the project. It can be on your building, or it could be on a different county building. But it needs to be part of this project investment. Then there's a project contingency, and if this were a renovation, that project contingency to be called annals and surprises, would be a little higher. But because we are planning to demolish the existing buildings that we're replacing, that project contingency, uh, for a project of this size, 10% is a reasonable contingency to add. So, that equates to dollars here. So, 10% of, um, 787 is 787. And then the total construction cost, this is what we call hard costs, or the total check that you would pay to a general contractor. Okay, that is this column here. And everything else that you don't pay a general contractor, we call those soft costs. It is permits, it's, uh, geotechnical services, surveying, furniture, uh, design and engineering, uh, equipment, those kinds of things. And 25%, because you have an economy of scale, is reasonable here. That 25% equates to a number. And that, the hard cost and the soft cost equals a total cost. So, we've created that line item total cost for each, each line item for today's dollars. We developed this in November and December, so we kept it at 2021. Um, and then we escalated it, which is the construction industry's term for inflation, uh, for three years. And that three-year timetable would take you from now up until the time of bidding. And we thought it would take some time to, um, pull together a funding strategy, and also time for that design and permit and bidding process to happen. So that's kind of that three-year piece. It could be done a bit faster. But, uh, we felt that was a good time range to put on this. So, a few things to consider here is that the Curry County Courthouse and Jail project and Sheriff's Quarters has most premiums. I mean, it, it has a lot of, you know, space and factors involved. And so, if, if you're doing, um, you know, people that are very comfortable and knowledgeable about residential construction, for example, may look at some numbers and say, "Oh, wow, that's really, that's really high," or "That's really low." Mostly high, because there are a lot of these premium factors. One is, it's a public job. So, public jobs come with boldly prevailing wage, um, expectations or requirements. Um, it, it also, um, has public safety. It's got a jail, it's the courthouse, it's got underground parking. Um, and each of these factors, it's got phasing. It's an essential facility. Uh, we'll talk about that more in a moment. And so, each of those pieces, um, are more expensive than what you would call typical construction. Um, if you, uh, an essential facility is facility that, um, needs to remain operational during and after a major seismic event. And so, it is built to a higher structural standard, and, uh, there's a lot more bracing of ductwork and ceilings and things that even that you can't see in space. Uh, and it requires emergency generator and things like that. So, um, those are some things to keep in mind. The site costs, I'm, I'm gonna, um, go down here. Can you see my hand on this site cost section?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, and you can see that of the total amount, right, it's a very small, it's a very small number. And most of it really is in demolition and site utilities, including interior. So, I'm, I'm gonna kind of move down from these line items, though I'm happy to go for any level of detail that you like on it. And I'm going to jump into the building costs. And we've arranged these from the highest cost spaces to the lower cost spaces. And, the, the courtrooms and judge chambers and the large commission room had some, uh, their, their tall ceiling spaces, they had got some extra equipment. There might be a couple of level changes in them. There's probably some slightly elevated materials and finishes. And so, uh, we gave 425 per square foot as a unit cost. Jail detention areas, uh, have a very, have the same cost, but, um, for, for a different reason. So, they'll be trimmed with high-impact resistant drywall with stainless steel, uh, wall base with, you know, some extremely high, um, density, uh, and low-maintenance kind of materials. The sheriff and the jail office and those support spaces around those two is slightly lower number two, kind of in the mid-range. And then the courthouse, public circulation and lobbies. So, there's a public, um, wide staircase, there's a, probably a couple of elevators. Um, there are wider circulation paths so that, uh, people don't bump into each other, and there's plenty of accessibility and social distancing, things like that. But it's kind of given this 365 per square foot number. These, this 345 is more the back-of-house spaces, that is primarily county staff spaces. So, it's any office, any office support space, um, kind of the larger, uh, jury assembly area. And the back-of-house corridors, which there are several to keep, uh, circulation adequately separated. And then the underground parking and sally ports at the bottom of the building, uh, are about 225 a square foot. And it's, um, underground parking is generally the most expensive, uh, kind of parking. If you're talking about surface parking is the least expensive, then structured parking above ground, then underground parking. But for this building, the transport of people, uh, through sally ports and having very secured parking areas for what you need, we felt like that was just the right solution, and 225 is what we put that number at. So, that number that, that you would pay to subcontractors is just under 61 million. With margins to a general contractor and, and who the state gets in the contingency, uh, it's about 68. You can see how these numbers kind of build over time, soft costs today's dollars and then in 2024.
I have a question if I can interrupt you.
Of course.
This is Commissioner Pash. So, what, what are you showing as the total, uh, square footage of this project?
It is right here.
167,000 square feet?
Yes.
That just doesn't seem right to me. Talking about a three-story building?
It's a four-story-
Well, with the parking structure is for you.
Um, it's, it's four plus the parking.
Okay. And parking is included in square footage?
Underground parking, sally port.
Right.
Yes, parking's included, the underground parking's included in square footage.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Right, that's right, right there. About 17,000.
And Dana, real quick? We, we can't see the special considerations until you scroll up for, so... There you go.
Ah, can, can you see it now?
Yeah.
Go up a little higher.
There we go.
Now, now we're good, thank you.
Great. So, the last category under special considerations, these are things that the general contractor, uh, will likely put on the bid, though it will not be listed as a specific line item. They will kind of figure it out and spread it through all the categories. And, um, it is, uh, you know, it, it is certainly, and what you have that's working in your favor is that it's an economy of scale. It's a big building. It's got a lot of components to it. Uh, and there will be a tremendous amount of competition to, um, win this project. So, but, you know, it, it will get people from Portland, it'll get people from, um, you know, uh, Eugene, it'll get people from, you know, maybe, maybe Washington and California as well.
Oh, no matter.
Because it's in a remote location, uh, it's likely that we, we should, we should be planning for that surcharge. And that, um, because of the way that all of the pieces fit together, we need to keep a portion of the jail operational while the majority of the building project gets completed. Then we need to demolish the last part of the jail, then construct the last part of the project. And because there is that phasing, um, that we are planning to happen in three phases, that there is hugely some kind of a, a surcharge for that. And so, we didn't put any soft costs on those, but we did, um, plan for them.
I don't have any questions.
So, questions?
I have none. Clerk? Uh, you mentioned contractors, that the, the, the competition would be good. How does that work? Do you help us on that? I mean, I, I know that would be, you know, a phase beyond, uh, what we're talking about today. The price and funding and bonds, all, all that we would have to contemplate. But you would help us, uh, how does, how do you get the word out on something like that to potential contractors?
It's a great, great question. And yes, the answer is yes, we will help, and yes, we usually do participate in that process. Either in an advisory capacity or we're in a selection capacity. Meaning, we are, we are sometimes a voting member, sometimes we are a non-voting member. But yes, as we work through this project together, we would, um, talk about the contract format. So, is this project going to be best suited for a, um, general contractor, construction manager format, where the contractor is selected during design, and helps develop and do cost checks and constructibility reviews all the way through? Or is it something that would be a competitive lump-sum bid? And, um, it really depends on lots of factors, which way you choose to go. Because it is phased, often someone would go with a CMGC, uh, project format, delivery format. Uh, but if you talk to cost estimators in the state, they will often say that if you have a, a well-documented set of construction documents, that you will get a less expensive cost if you go competitive lump-sum. It is less collaborative. It leaves you more open to an approach where it is, um, right for requesting change orders, but not necessarily being granted to those change orders. So, the short answer is we absolutely would assist with that process.
And that's factored in? No?
Uh, yes.
Oh, okay.
That's just part of the normal, you know, process of being, um, you know, a good team player.
Okay.
And one of the things that the object does during the construction phase is to be your advocate for the project or construction, to make sure that you, you get it built the way you want, according to the terms and conditions of the contract, and that the contractor doesn't take unfair advantage of any situation that comes up with regard to, you know, phasing the project, or, um, things that are discovered during a renovation that they should have known about, or, you know, delays that, that, that maybe may be beyond your control. Which, there's, you know, with a phased renovation, where you're also occupying the site, there's the potential for other things to happen. Which is one of the reasons it's done, was Dana was suggesting the CMGC approach is that it, uh, it eliminates that potential, um, because the contractor's at the table from the get-go. And it also gives you a little bit more wiggle room if you decide that, oh, you know, we need more time to vacate the annex, or we need to, you know, we need more time between phases to staff up the jail and get ready to demo the last bid, or whatever may, may come along.
You, um, some, i- it's impossible to tell which one is less expensive, because projects are not, are not delivered both ways simultaneously. You know, you choose one way, but often estimators will say you pay a little bit more, but it's a much more collaborative approach.
So, what, this is a question I never ask. At what point, you know, assuming everything goes, you know, on a fair, fairly routine but methodical path of different phases over, obviously, a long period of time, at what point do you say, "Okay, we've done our work, and this is as far as we can help you with, as far as we can take you on this project"? and this is as far as we can help you, as far as we can take you on this project?
Wow.
See, we, we want you to go, we want you to go to the taxpayers and the state government, you know?
Yeah.
You can, no, we want you to help us, excuse me, not go for us.
Great, we're all in, we're all in. So, I think to us, being a strong team member means, you know, we're there to help you. And some people have an understanding of architecture and design, and that we're really strong during design, and then when it goes into construction, we're kind of a little bit more hands-off, and that is not the way we operate. We're there from right now until after you've moved in and have questions about how to take care of the building.
And that's what I heard about your company from the start, especially from, you know, Jeff and I have, I've always really respected Jeff, because we've kind of had that relationship since day one, but I've always heard from day one that you guys, your follow-through is complete right till the key, till the keys are handed over.
And beyond, so that's good.
Beyond doesn't mean you would be an, beyond doesn't mean you would be an inmate, of course. Depending on how creative we get on the financing of this thing, right?
Well, just, yeah, going back to that, you know, a lot of our public sector projects, or most of our public sector projects have a strong, uh, a component of public outreach and engagement, and it's pretty common for...
You just went blank.
We lost you.
Back up a couple sentences, please. It's pretty common, you said, that's the last we heard.
Yep. So it's pretty common for us to have to, for us to assist our clients in going to their constituents, either to get approval for a school bond, or approval for a utility tax, or just get voter support for, you know, maybe a, a hotel tax, or whatever is it maybe needed to fund that particular project. And it's generally pretty helpful for us to be in those meetings explaining the project, because we can explain sort of the nuts and bolts of the project, and why it works the way it does, why it's designed the way it is, why it's the size and cost that it is, and that takes some of the pressure off you all. You all can really focus on why our community needs this. And then we're talking about, again, you know, so we can get peppered with questions about, well, you know, these costs are higher than what I did for my, you know, garage or my office building, and, and it just takes some of the pressure off you all, and you can then focus on the things that are really specific to your constituents, and you can speak to them sort of, you know, as, as, as their representative. And we can be there as sort of that third party, a little bit more, you know, impartial or, you know, kind of an expert who's done this over and over again, and, and take some of that heat off.
Well, very, very helpful. Hey, on the information packet before the meeting, I sent out a article on Benton County. Are you familiar with that, where the state paid for half of just the courthouse, but it was 40 million? So in that sense, the sticker shock we have from this doesn't seem that, you know, that far out of line. Benton County is, you know, population-wise about twice the size of Curry County, maybe three. But they got, you know, they really got some great state assistance there, and we're, we're in, we're in a good position. We remain in a good position. So, did you see that article, or were you familiar with that by chance?
Absolutely, yep. I, I did read that, you sent it out, and, I mean, that's great news. And this has, this has workfulness in that Benton County project.
And, and I would dare say that your need is greater as well.
Yeah, we were just, matter of fact, the jail commander was just over today giving us an update, and there was a group of counties that came down and kind of surveyed our jail, and what'd they say, it was the worst of all of them? They've seen it's the worst. Conditions-wise and upkeep and cleanliness, it's, it was fine, but the structure itself is the worst. So we appreciate you saying that, though, because we know we're going to have to demonstrate the need and make the case that, you know, we want to be moved to, you know, maybe not the head of the line, but we want to, we want to have a realistic approach based on what we're dealing with here, and what the dangers are, what the needs are, what the long-term expectations are. So, yeah, thanks for reading that, by the way, Dana.
And, and part of what we do, part of what we do with, you know, this preliminary work that we're doing and creating these visuals is, is to help the state legislature and the other folks who are providing funding for the project to help apply in the project and understand the need. We just did this a year or two ago for a, a project in Clanton County, kind of a groundbreaking new style of residential treatment facility for teen girls. And we, we did the same sort of, of graphic effort with floor plans and renderings, and in another project for the seed, we even created a video fly-through of the building to help get voter support for the project. And it's really pretty key, a lot of times, the, the effort that, you know, you, we all have put in here in terms of the design and the cost, really pays off in, in people understanding. And then you get, you know, it, it takes you to that next level of getting funding.
So did I hear you say, or at least somewhat commit to a project manager here the whole time, during construction?
You know, generally...
That was somewhat of a leading question, by the way.
Generally, we don't, but it really depends on the situation, the scope, the complexity of the project, and just what it needs. You know, this is a really complex project. It has a lot of specialty components. Generally, it wouldn't need that, but it depends, and we're happy to do that if that is what the county wants. And it is just part of the, you know, conversation moving forward. And just one more piece here is that it's, it's worth mentioning that we are, you know, we are at a transition moment, that is, we are completing what is called pre-design, and you're about to enter what is design, design and construction documentation and construction administration and so forth. And so our work here is, is kind of wrapping up in the pre-design phase, but the next scope of work, which is, you know, kind of like the real project, how do you want to, you have some funding, and how quickly do you want to move forward? Do you want to start with some schematic design and get more definition? You know, there's a lot of work that can be done as soon as you'd like to start, or you might want to wait a while. But we, I just wanted to say that we are kind of at a transition moment, and that next step of like, okay, now the rubber is needing to move, and we're really going to move forward with advancing this project, beyond idea into reality, and having drawings to review and messages to share with your community, and, you know, those kinds of things, and beyond any construction documents. And so this is where we would discuss, the next step is where we would discuss all of these details.
Having never, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to go back to, to the question about having a, you know, a project manager during construction will be on-site typically weekly for a project of this size, just to monitor the work of the, of the contractor, make sure things go according to the plan. Some of our clients decide to hire their own project management consultant, or what we call an owner's rep, to help them out, particularly, you know, smaller agencies that don't have a huge facility staff, that they can devote somebody to this. And, and, you know, some of our clients find that it's helpful to kind of take that burden off and to be able to have a resource there who's okay with the life of this project through design and construction. You're, you're the go-to person, you're going to report to the commissioners once a week, you're going, you're going to attend every meeting, you're going to vet contractors, you know, you're, you're going to arrange meetings with all the stakeholders. I mean, a lot of the same things that we have been doing with, with you all up to now, you could, you could delegate that to a person, that, that could be a county employee, or it could be a consultant. It's, you know, it really kind of depends on the, the time that you all have available to devote to this, and, you know, I mean, you know, one of you may have the time to do that. And, and so that, but that's, that's a question that I think is really, I mean, there, there's no wrong answer in terms of how you all do it. I think that a lot of our clients find that when they do hire an owner's rep, a lot of the things that that owner's rep says, or that they offer to do, is stuff that is already in our scope of work, things that we're, you know, either legally obligated to do for you, or contractually obligated to do for you in terms of holding the contractor's seat to the fire, reviewing applications for payment, things like that. So we're, you know, there's, during the construction phase, there's a little bit of redundancy between what those people do and what we already have to do. But for some of our clients, it is helpful to have a, a point person that they can go to. You know, if you decide to go that route, we know some folks in Southern Oregon, I know somebody in Curry County who, you know, who might be available to help you out and just kind of lighten your load a little bit.
At the same time, and I think it's worth going into, I think it's worth more conversation with that particular piece, because we do find that there's a fair amount of duplication as licensed architects in the state of Oregon, which is one of the strictest, most rigorous kind of training and, and education states for architects. We have the health, safety, and welfare always at the top of our responsibility, and we also have a fiduciary duty to make sure that you pay only for what is required, and we already have to review those things. So, yeah, it's a great question worth discussing more.
We also have the code of ethics of our professional organization, the American Institute of Architects, which is similar to the Bar Association for lawyers. So, you know, above and beyond what we're legally obligated to do, we're also ethically obligated to, to do certain things and conduct ourselves in certain ways. So it is, it is worthy of a separate discussion, because sometimes that owner's rep fee can, can get to be, you know, as much as half of our fee. And, and so the, you know, that adds to those soft costs that you're paying, and you've got to find money somewhere to pay for that. We had one client, the Jackson County Health Department, when we did a new 170,000 square foot building for them, they actually basically hired within the county and, and found a person within the county, someone who was already there. They, they replaced that person's job and devoted one of the county's staff to be their project manager. She followed the project all the way through, from, from pre-design through construction. And, you know, in the meantime, they found someone else to sort of do her day-to-day work and task her with, okay, you're, you're going to focus on this project. And, and that was a really very effective solution for them. It costs a lot less than hiring a owner's rep. And then when the project was over, she was able to take that information and knowledge and kind of give it back to the county, and, and her work in other ways and other projects that she then took on. That was, that was an unusual approach that we hadn't seen before, but it worked out really well.
So if I could ask, you know, knowing that the, the court, or not the court, the, the state has already given us basically a go-ahead for, I think it was three, three million or three and a half million dollars is what we received of the go-ahead on, what would you recommend to be our next steps?
Boy, that's a great question. Worth probably a small internal discussion on our end. You know, I think that it's really smart to spend good money after good.
Yeah.
And if you felt like this project needs to happen, and it's going to require risk in order to do that, you know, what is that risk worth? Is it worth spending a million dollars or two million dollars and doing some more design to, and, and doing some public involvement, public education? Often that is what's needed, you know, you, you have to, you know, kind of shape the tree and has, has to pass all, pass all kinds of, you know, litmus tests of like, do we really need a building that big? Do, do we really need all three components? What, what feels like it's a little bit of a gilded facility? Or, you know, all of those things, you know, we can go through, you could do schematic design, for example, and that is the first phase of real design. You have a whole team of structural engineers, architects, you know, physical people, mechanical people, you know, the engineering types that are defining the building better. And, and you will have a moment now at this transition to say, okay, let's step back, let's create a committee and, and voices, let's review this. Is this building really the right size? Is it 50 feet or 200? You know, and we're, it can be at all of those meetings and help guide you through that process and do what is needed to tailor the project specifically through that next phase of design, which would be, you know, several months of design work. And at the end of that, you would have more imagery to share, you would have a lot more answers, because there's just a lot more information that is studied, researched, computed, you know, and be able to answer all kinds of questions through the community. So, you know, if I had to say right now on the spot, probably moving forward with schematic design would be a good risk to take if you felt like this project really needs to happen, and you feel like you have good money after good.
Well, for, for me, and, and I'm, I'm sure you, you know, I testified at the, with the state of the chief justice on this, and I believe they put us number one or number two on the state for necessity right now for a courthouse. So I don't think it's, it's going to be a hard sell for the state, because they already recognize the situation we're in. I think as far as justice goes, like Tom Langford and those people through the state courts, they're going to help push, because they know the situation of the courthouse and the jail. I think it's, if we were going to take an approach, as far as I'm concerned, it would be on the need of, of necessity need, not want. This isn't a want thing, this is a necessity. And, you know, going over, going through the phases that we've already gone through with your company, I don't think we've been extravagant in any, in any face of, of that word, or definition of that word. I think actually we've been quite conservative to try and get it all under one roof and, and have a, a very efficient building. So I, I don't think that the public would see it as extravagant. The sell of it would be the need of it, not the want of it. So that would be my approach, and for you guys to meet on, you know, for how you would feel would be our next step, would be something that I would welcome, at least have that administrative meeting, and then come back and, you know, get back together again and meet and discuss our next step, and, and how to, how to best use what we've already been allocated through the chief justice, would be my, would be my hope. So Dana, David, and Jeff, we have our building official here, kind of want to introduce him if you haven't met him yet, and he may have questions. Garrett Thompson, microphone?
Great.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, I've been following the, the project as much as I can since I've stepped aboard, and I, I like what I see. I do really look forward to that next phase. I did have some comments and concerns regarding the third-story layout, and maybe possibly talking with you about the segregation of a few of the departments that, that have been kind of lumped together, but it sounds like there's a, a process for that during the, the schematic phase. So I really look forward to working with you and hope to, hope to stay in contact.
Excellent.
That sounds great.
We look forward to it as well.
One of the things I would just elaborate on...
One of the things, I would just elaborate on Dana's explanation of what we would do during that schematic design phase is really just to highlight the fact that we will be bringing onboard a whole team of consultants who will develop designs for the structural systems, mechanical system, pumping and electrical and data system, the fire alarm systems, that will really inform the cost estimate, give you much more security that, yes, this is the actual cost of the building, this is what we can project it to be. And then at that point, as you're pursuing the different funding avenues, and as you get a better idea of what money is really likely to come through, if it's necessary to pull back in any aspect of the project, then we'll, we'll have an idea of where the money is and how much savings we're likely to get if we, you know, if we shrink the county offices by 10%, just by, you know, kind of arbitrarily, you know, cutting law spaces by 10% or by, you know, cutting jail capacity, which nobody wants to do. But, you know, just, there's a whole range of options that we can go through. And going through the schematic design process will get you to that point of either saying, oh yeah, things look good, we're on budget with where we thought we were at the pre-design phase and we have the money in hand. Or, you know, it's over, we made some adjustments, or it's on budget, but we're just not quite there with the funding. You know, we have a better idea of how much bond support we can give up through the community and we think we need to reduce the project budget. So we'll have the tools during the schematic design phase to help you make those adjustments to the project scope if it's necessary.
One more question, if you could. I've done, I actually worked on Wall Street for a few years and I did, we did bond work there. And compliance had issues with the districts and that, that we were doing the bond phase in. Would this bond be something that we would do? Would it be limited to just this community? Or could it be a statewide bond? Could it, you know, how would that work? I mean, how far could we stretch out on that bond?
I don't think I know the answer.
I have not heard of bonds stretching beyond the organization's kind of catchment, you know.
That's something I don't know. That's why I was asking.
Yeah, it's not, doesn't mean that it's not possible, but I just haven't experienced it. And I'm just wondering if part of it is, is how do you get voters to say yes to something they don't, can't get access to?
Okay.
I think that's for a general obligation bond where the voters are, you know, everybody's paying the same tax rate.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, Curry County or Coos County or Jackson County. But there are other types of bond mechanisms that I've seen even nonprofits and religious institutions use where they're creating a bond to generate funding for the project. And there, I think you have more, more leeway. But I don't know how counties can, they may not be able to take advantage.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Likewise.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys, so much.
Great presentation.
We're definitely going to be in touch now. We're going to move forward. That doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be in a fast-paced program, but we will, we will definitely be in touch. And, you know, working with the state, I think you folks obviously would be a very good resource for us on that.
Do we have these numbers also? Do we have a copy of these numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
We could send them a PDF of the...
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes, I think we're, I think you have that.
Yes, mine just didn't have yellow on it. But it was a one-page document, yes. This is very nice.
We need green.
Send that out to the three commissioners?
That would be fine, yes. Great. Thank you so much, guys. I appreciate it.
If we didn't answer any questions in the meantime, any thoughts come up, you know, after this meeting or wherever, just feel free to reach out to us.
Okay.
Okay. And Jeff, next time we're in a meeting together, please don't talk so much. You really interrupted us a lot there.
I'm a typical designer. When numbers come up, I kind of go silent a little bit.
All right, brother. Take care.
Well, now that we know that you guys are like attorneys, we'll have to have an architect joke the next time you come, so.
All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you all. It's been a real pleasure. We look forward to the next step.
Likewise.
All right, guys.
It's been a privilege to help you out. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Wow.
There it is on the...
Up there?
Yes.
Okay. Garrett, does that shock you?
A little bit.
I mean, I was figuring, I said 50, I was thinking, okay, maybe 60, but...
Yeah. I was thinking, I've had a few conversations with people about this, just kind of estimating. And I was, we were thinking more along 60 to 75. So, yeah, the entire guy was...
But I want to say I do not believe there's, and I don't know where they got that, and I'm sure they did their job, because they've done a lot of work throughout this state in Northern California and building architecture for buildings. But I do not think there's 167,000 square feet in this building.
The one they're proposing with the vacation of Flory Street, it's substantially larger than what's sitting on the ground now.
But I thought it was...
That's 35,000 square feet per level, including parking.
I thought it was like, the initial drawing I saw of the first level was only like 16 or 17,000 square feet.
So I, I've been playing around with their drawing and just that third story, trying to figure out, like, something that would work better for us. That way I can present the solutions to the problem.
Good.
And I've gotten a rough scale that works for what makes sense. So I can kind of figure that out.
Okay. I also don't think $425 a square foot is what, I mean, especially some of the stuff, concrete, it's a lot of the, and I don't know if you can use it here, you'd know more about that than I do. But I've seen buildings down in San Diego that my mentor put up. They were concrete structured and they'd bring the whole wall in, in one, in one move, they built the whole thing.
So, so one thing you're going to have to take into consideration though is there's going to be a lot of special effects. So, I mean, it requires a specialty, it requires a third-party individual to come in and look at. There's going to be concretes that are a lot stronger than your standard traits. And I think there's only one person in the area that can, that can test that kind of concrete, you know, that has the last set up for it. So you're getting all your product from one source. Like, I'm not going to say they're going to be priced, but...
They can dictate it.
You know, and then, and then what they said was also true about, you know, your advanced wages from...
Mm-hmm. Prevailing wage.
Well, I absolutely trust this company. I've talked to some people that have worked with them and they're, they're all five stars.
So, I think the numbers that we were looking at were more of a general commercial. And this is going to, this is, I guess, the price for government.
And by the way, yes, I'll be the first one to say it. I also trusted Open Gov.
Good. That's a good one.
All right.
Hindsight is better than 2020. Okay, well, we got to go back into executive session. So thank you all for joining in and seeing that presentation from ORW. And as soon as we get our jaws back into place and wrap our heads around that number, we'll be back in touch with them. So we're going to go back into executive session, accordance to...